Okay, fine, all right. I'll make this statement first, let's see. Okay. Call this meeting to order in accordance with the provisions of Section 10:4-8D of the Open Public Meetings Act. The date, location, and time of this commencement of this meeting is reflected in the meeting notice, a copy of which schedule has been filed with the village manager and the village clerk, the Ridgewood News, the Record newspapers, and posted on a bulletin board in the entry lobby of the village municipal offices at 131 North Maple Avenue and on the village website, all in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call. What do we do? We have to do roll.
I think we have to do oaths first, right?
Actually, let's first do this to... Well, actually, why don't we do the flag salute? Just so we're kind of... I think that the agenda is just a little... Okay, all right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for the record, we're also going to state for the duration of the coronavirus healthcare emergency, village rules close to the public and meetings are held with participants at remote locations connecting to conferencing software provided by zoom.us. Members of the public are invited to view meetings using the Zoom client, which allows them to raise a hand and contribute with voice and video when they are invited to do so during public portions of the meeting. You can go online presumably and get the link and the meeting number and all that information and come on in and join us and visit for their exciting village planning board meeting. Okay. And with that, we will go to our reorg.
So you know Debbie is coming?
Yeah, she's here. Yeah, she's got to be joined, okay. Okay.
Okay, so where's Chris Morton again? Oh, there he is, okay, good. I really like the box that keep moving. Okay, great. So we're going to go to our reorg agenda. And we'll start with the oath of office.
And first, I would like to administer the oath to Mayor Knudsen. Could you raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Susan Knudsen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of office of.
Class one planning board member.
Class one planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, is... Did Jim come in? Okay, so Jim is not here. Councilwoman Lorraine Reynolds?
Here.
Okay, here we go. We're gonna swear you in, so raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lorraine Reynolds.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of class three planning board member.
Of office of class three planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Frances? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Frances Bartow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
As a class four planning board member.
I'm a class four planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And...
Diane.
Yeah, now I'm pulling up Diane. Just wanted to make sure I had the right Diane. Over, okay. Okay. Diane? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Diana Bryan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of class four planning board member.
Of class four planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. So now, let's go back to... And we still don't have Jim, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we can do a roll call.
Okay. Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
Chief Ben Gore. Councilwoman Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Joel?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Pateri?
Here.
Ms. Huban?
Here.
Ms. Bartow?
Here.
Ms. Westner?
Here.
Okay.
Very good. And so now we will close the nominations for the election of chairman.
I nominate Richard Joel.
Second.
Okay.
Who nominated?
Councilwoman Reynolds.
Okay.
And the second, I believe, was Melanie.
Okay. Okay. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Bartow? Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. The next one will be for vice chairman. Do we have a motion to nominate a vice chairman?
I'd like to nominate Diane O'Brien.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, who did that? Who said that? Sorry, who said that?
I did, that's okay.
All right.
Okay. All right. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes, thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Can I just... I want to jump in for one second. I want to say first... Wait, can I just say something? Okay. So I just want to congratulate once again and thank Chairman Joel. I think since 2016, you've been serving as chairman of the board. I think we were very fortunate at that exact moment that you stepped into the role and accepted it. And then we are fortunate that you continue to do so. And it's a vice chair. I just wanted to say, I know we had two individuals that potentially would have served well. And I'm really grateful for those who had an interest. And welcome Diane as a vice chairman. So, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next order of business. It'll be the appointment of council for the planning board. And it's for Christopher Martin. Do we have a... And there's also a resolution that we have. Do we have a motion for the appointment and the resolution?
I'll make.
I'll second. Okay. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, Chris. And thanks for all your service and your continued service.
Yeah, you have a great group. Thank you, Rich.
Okay. Our next one will be appointment and resolution for Glenn Kynes as alternate council for the planning board. We've never really had the use for an alternate, but it's someone to have as a backstop in case Chris is not able to serve on a certain matter or there's a conflict. So we just appoint just in case.
Which brings me to a quick question. Do we... Did anybody reach out to Mr. Kynes just to confirm that he's still available? And still, you know, I don't... I mean, we appointed him originally. We spoke with him back in, I believe it was 2016. That's four years ago now. And I don't know that we've had any outreach. So while we can appoint him now, I think it might be prudent, at least just somebody, to do a little outreach and just...
Sure, I'll reach out to him.
He might not even remember. I mean, I guess we sent him everything, but...
No, we had contact with him last year. But I'll reach out again to him. It's kind of like when you don't have much activity with the person. It's out of sight, out of mind, but I'll just reach out to him.
Richard, I could email him, whatever you want to do.
Okay, all right. We'll work it out one way or the other.
It'd be nice coming from the chairman.
Yeah, yeah, I'll contact him. Do we want to appoint him conditionally? If, Chris, what would be the best?
I think since he's a renewal, he could be a holdover anyhow. You could appoint him. And if there's any issue, then we can address getting another professional backup. And as you said earlier, Rich, the issue is not whether I or someone from my firm can serve. The issue is if there is a conflict, then my firm is out as well as me. So that's why there's a backup.
Okay, so do you recommend appointing him? And then if he's not able to serve, then we'll just continue to get someone else, I guess?
Yes, only because if we don't do it, he's still a holdover and he'd be in that spot anyhow.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll make the motion to appoint.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Okay, Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
I'm muted.
I'm mute. Yes. Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay. The next will be the appointment and resolution for Mary Ann Bucci Carter and A. Peter Van De Coy of CME Associates Consulting and Municipal Engineers as planners for the planning board for the year of July 1, 2020 through to June 30, 2021. Do I have a motion for the appointment and the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, Allison.
Okay. Okay. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds? You're muted again. Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Westner? And Ms. O'Brien?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay. Next will be the appointment and resolution for Elizabeth McManus of Kyle &amp; McManus Associates as conflict planner for the planning board for the year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Do I have a motion for the appointment and the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Who seconded?
Lorraine did.
Okay.
Okay, call the roll.
All right, Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Bartow? Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay. Next item will be appointment and resolution of Elizabeth McManus of Kyle &amp; McManus Associates as the planning consultant for the affordable housing and related matters for the planning board for the year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Okay, do I have a motion for that appointment and resolution?
I'll make a motion, Richard.
Okay, Debbie? We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Westner? And Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, next will be appointment and resolution of Christopher Rota Hauser as professional engineer for the planning board for the year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Do we have a motion for the appointment and the resolution?
Allison?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban? Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Rich, just a point of order. I haven't been doing a resolution for Chris because he's a direct employee. If you think that's appropriate, I'd be happy to do it. Wish him well. And Chris, would you like me to do a resolution? Or do you think it's satisfactory yet?
It's quite satisfactory. I mean, this has only been the last few reorg meetings. Back when I started, it never came up.
Okay. Rich, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, you can do a quick resolution. It just goes in our files. I mean, he's been appointed, so it's official that he's in that capacity, so...
You're happy to do that, thanks.
It doesn't hurt, yep. Okay, and I guess the next was traffic engineering consultant. I don't know if we want to have a discussion on it or just carry it? Or did anyone have any thoughts on that?
So I... Well... When was the last time we went out on that? How old? That's two years ago now. We just... Do we... Does anybody remember?
It's a couple of years, at least. We haven't had a traffic consultant in a while or the need. And we were kind of holding off last time in that we didn't need it. And if we did need it, we would get one.
Of course, just... Or actually, what have they been doing over at the Board of Adjustment? Has that need... Oh, Jane, okay.
We haven't needed one lately either, so... But normally, we would use whoever... I know that at the Board of Adjustment, when we had those four that answered the... What do you call it? When they answered the ad for it. The Board of Adjustment also looked at it and, you know, had made a... Like a spreadsheet and with all the important parts of what they were looking for. So, you know, but they would all use the same... Both boards would use the same.
I think we kept putting it off. We had this discussion maybe at one of our last in-person meetings, right?
Right. I recall that, yeah.
Yeah, just as soon as just carry it over. And when the need pops up, we can do an RFP and address it then. Or if the zoning board has one, you know, then probably... Or has the need, then we'll know. Maybe that's the person to use.
But I mean, why don't we just do another RFP request for... Why don't we do another one? Just so we... I don't think we want to continue not have somebody without. And I could reach out or I could reach out for Sergio and just find out what, you know, what his thoughts are. If they... I mean, I don't even know what... I guess they just have no need. But why don't we just do another proposal, RFP, RFQ, whatever we want to do? And then let's get on this and get this taken care of. I don't feel comfortable that we just don't have anyone. We should be scrambling at the 11th hour looking for someone if the need arises.
I agree, just in case there's an application and the time of application rule deemed approval comes up and we don't have one and we're scrambling. It's probably the best way to do it.
Yep. Yeah, I'd rather at least have somebody ready to roll.
Chris, could you do the RFQ as we've done in the past?
Yeah, I'll just take the one... I think the last one I did was maybe a year, 16 months ago. So I'll just take the same one, freshen up the dates and put it out in the street and see what we get.
Okay, sure. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next will be appointment for the Site Plan Review Committee. And I believe last year, we had Susan, Joel Torrelli, and Debbie Pateri on this one. Is... Am I correct on that?
On the Site Plan Review Committee? But I actually want to be on the exemption committee. I don't want to be nudgy about anything, but I'd rather be on the site planning. I know... Who was on site plan exemption last year?
Jim.
How many of us go on exemption?
One.
I don't want to step on the chief's toes, okay? Fine. Jim can have it, it's fine. I think he likes it. Chief of the fire sheet should be mad at me.
Did you want to continue in the Site Plan Review Committee?
We never get anything, right?
Yeah, well...
I mean, that's fine. Oh, yeah, just put me down again, unless somebody else wants it to do nothing.
Okay. Did anyone else?
It's kind of important if you get a large application. They deem it complete. That's... We just haven't had one in a while.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of like a double-edged sword, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The exemption committee is very important, but in a different way. Like, you have to judge whether it needs to go to the board or not. So they're both good committees.
I was on the exemption committee, I think, a number of years ago.
Yes.
The exemption committee. And somehow, I guess maybe Jim wanted it. It's fine. It's fine. Review. All right, I'm on review.
All right. Debbie, would you continue with the Site Plan Review Committee?
Sure, Richard.
Okay. And do we have a... So it'll be Susan, Debbie. Is there someone else that would like to take part in that?
I'll do it if anybody else doesn't want it.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll do it.
Okay. All right, so Susan, Debbie, and Melanie for the Site Plan Review Committee. And then for Site Plan Exemption Committee, we'll continue with Jim. And then for Master Plan Reexamination Committee.
Pick me.
My suggestion is to continue with Susan, Melanie, Diane, and myself.
I love it. It's one of my favorite things. I hope I can say.
Me too. It's so fun.
And then the next one would be...
Who were... Well, the four... It was Diane?
Susan, Melanie, Diane, and myself.
Unless Susan, you want out? Went off? No?
Really?
I said, "Do you want to go?"
Somebody giving me the boot?
All right. And how about Historical Preservation Commission?
So... So HPC, we're just putting on hold. And Diane is going... Diane and I are going to sit down with Joseph Plicky and take a look at where we're at with HPC and kind of regroup and restructure because presently, we do not have a commission, hence the applications coming to the planning board. So we'll take a look at that. Just for the record, as we went through the legal aspects, that's a class A, B, and C member, not a 1, 2, 3, right? A, B, C?
Yes.
So the C members, actually, I think there was some confusion over C, class C members. And this is part of that advancing towards regrouping. And because HPC falls under planning board, this is the reason I'm kind of sharing this. The class C member is written as a member of community, a resident, that cannot be an employee of the village, of the municipality, but may be a member of either the board of adjustment or planning board, which means even though we appoint someone from the planning board, if others, members of the community at large, or somebody who's on the planning board has a specific interest, either or, or board of adjustment can be appointed. So we're going to look at that, regroup, restructure, and move forward with HPC. So there's nobody right now other than Diane's helping out. But if anybody does think they're interested at some point, just let me know.
Okay. The next will be appointment for the open space committee.
Additionally, I've taken on this role, but it's also been a sort of do nothing group. But if something crops up, I'm happy to be there.
Okay, great.
You know, I think we have funds in our open space trust fund, and I'm hoping, Lorraine, do you remember who we, I'm trying to find my photo of the appointment.
Oh, open space. I think, I want to say that was Pam, maybe. I can tell you in a second.
Yeah, so I'm hopeful that we have some new energy in that. I know I have it here too. I just, oh, no wonder I can't find it. Hang on. Okay, so we'll figure that. Well, I'll let you know, France. And then I think that we're going to see a little bit more movement, hopefully, on open space this year. So we'll look forward for that.
Yeah, open spaces, Pam.
Okay, okay. So you have councilwoman Perrin is the council liaison, so I anticipate that she'll re-up that quite a bit, okay?
All right, the next will be the resolution of adoption of the matter and compliance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, items A through H. And as attached here too, for the year beginning July 7, 2020 through June 30, 2021. So there's the resolution that we had in our packet and then the meeting schedule that was attached. So I have a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion.
Do we have to move on that? Was it?
Diane with the motion and who seconded?
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, call the roll.
Okay. Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Who ban? Petiri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the reorg.
Rich, just one, one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Could we just have the board carry the bylaws and the budget as presently existing?
Okay, sure. We need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to carry the bylaws and the budget?
I'll make the motion, Richard.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Petiri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else, Chris?
I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, that concludes the reorganize, reorg part of the planning board meeting. Now we're going to move into the regular meeting part. And do we have any public comments on topics not pending before the board? Dylan, did anyone raise their hand at all?
Where is Dylan?
There's no.
There's one person, but they didn't raise their hand.
Okay, all right. So there's no comments. Our next will be committee commission professional updates for non-agenda topics. Do we have any from anyone?
None.
No, okay. Do we have any correspondence received by the board, Jane?
No.
Okay, no. All right, our first agenda item will be North Maple Park Block 3209 Lot 1, courtesy review for the proposed permanent field lighting. Chris, can you just explain what a courtesy review is for the board members?
Oh, go ahead, Chris. You go. In accordance with the municipal land use law, capital expenditure projects in a municipality often go at the board's discretion for a courtesy review by a land use board, usually the planning board.
Okay. Chris Martin, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just essentially, the, the project, any project that fits under this does not need to be approved by the planning board. It's just a courtesy for the board, for the town experts, if you will, in terms of land use matters, to make comments that should be considered by the, it's not an applicant, by the individual who's involved in bringing the project into the community. So again, it's trying to get it right with the board as experts in the area of land use, but there's no binding effect by what the board can do.
Okay. Chris Rutterhauser, did you want to present this?
Yes. This is the Maple Park lighting project. The Village Parks and Recreation Department is proposing to replace existing diesel fuel portable light towers used to illuminate the Maple Park turf field with six permanent light towers. The permanent towers will be supplied with electricity from a nearby PCNG panel, thereby eliminating the noise, smell, and inefficiencies of the portable diesel light towers, while providing a better light pattern for the field with less spillage. In your packet, you should have gotten a sketch prepared by our engineering division, shows the field with the approximate location where the six poles will go. The project has been approved by the village council. The approval resolution is number 20-86. It is also, was also provided in your materials. Funds have been dedicated in the amount of $145,000 from the village capital budget for the work. Additionally, as stated in the resolution, a Burton County open space grant in the amount of $145,000 was awarded to do the work. The Ridgewood Sports Groups also contributed $140,000 towards the project cost. For those who are not familiar with the location, the field is located in the flood hazard area of the Ho-Hokey's Brook, requiring permitting with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. After extensive discussions with the NJDEP, the project qualified for a flood hazard area permit by rule. That was their determination. A copied approval was also given to the board members in their packet. The Maple Park turf field is the village's only synthetic turf field. The other turf fields belong to the Ridgewood Board of Ed. The synthetic turf allows the field to tolerate constant use almost year round. Winter is pretty much dependent on how much snow we get. If we had a mild winter like this past one, we'll have seen people out on the field. Lighting the field extends the field's use considerably, especially towards the latter part of the year when the sun sets, often before 5:00 PM, like in November and December. I'd be happy to answer any questions members might have.
Chris, are there currently lights at that field?
They're the portable diesel, the light towers.
And it's the same, it's the same amount of lights? It's six, six lights that are at that field currently?
Don't know if it's six or more because they're, they don't cast as good a pattern as the fixed lights do. And they have, we have gotten complaints because you hear the engines running.
Got it. Okay, but there are currently lights there?
The portable.
Sorry, just haven't been there at night. Okay.
This will definitely, is, does this look like something for sure? I know last year, a couple of years, the fields are always the biggest thing to, you know, nobody can get field space or field time. Is this something like we'll be able to look forward to more night games, stuff like that for certain? Or I know sometimes it gets to be November and they take away the mobile lights and that's it. But, so this is something that's definitely a positive. I mean, it brings in, I would even think, revenue and everything, but we, that's a guarantee that we'll be able to use the field longer into the year?
You, the field use will be extended into the evening, but the village council and past councils have dictated how late the lights can be on. I think it's no, not past 9:30 or 10:00 PM. Again, that's, that, the duration of the lighting, that's an action that's determined by the mayor and council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's, it's a great improvement. I mean, you're saying less spillage, no noise or pollution. You know, those are diesel generators and to get funding from other sources, I think it's a great thing. I think the, it's a win-win here.
We, direct, on behalf of the recreation department, we think it's a great, it'll be a great enhancement to the village. The permitting process with DEP was a bit of a difficult thing with the pandemic, but we, we succeed, we succeeded.
I'll just add that we heard from some of the neighbors regarding the lights and the potential spillage and disruption to their quality of life. I, my recollection is that the fixtures themselves don't go above the tree line. We looked at all of that. We made certain that the, the lights were directional so that wouldn't cast any spillage over into the neighbors, especially those, I think, is that Rose Court over there, Chris?
I mean, the streets surrounding it are Northern Parkway and Meadowbrook Avenue. Rose Court and Vestacord are a little bit further away, but those are residents that still could be negatively impacted. The advantage with the fixed towers is once the light patterns are set, we can easily address any neighboring complaints and then orient the light to minimize those complaints. And it's not going to be like a case like with the light towers where somebody might situate it so it doesn't result in a complaint, but the next sports group says, oh, we got a dark corner and they move it. None of the sports groups or the users of the field are going to have the ability to adjust how the light gets directed.
Plus they're quieter. Those, the other ones are very loud. This will be great.
That is true.
So Chris, does somebody go and just set them up once and then it covers all the field and then it's done? So to your point, no one can move them?
They get, first the poles get installed, then the fixtures have to get mounted, then a lot of careful analysis has to be done to see that the light pattern covers the field uniformly. You don't want to have bright spots. You certainly don't want to have dark spots. So there's a little bit of trial and error method in getting the lighting situated. At that time, if we have any complaints from residents, we'll also try to address them.
Got it.
To minimize them, excuse me.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right. I guess, Chris Martin, we should just respond back that just that we reviewed it and that we look favorably on it, or?
Yeah, I would simply say that it was reviewed and the board finds no adverse land use impact by the project and, and recommends it as presented.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah. You use a motion just for the chair to memorialize that recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a motion for me to send a letter with how Chris just stated that?
Make a motion, Richard.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So just for the record, I just wanted to suggest that Councilwoman Reynolds should abstain. Is that appropriate?
And yes, and the mayor.
Yes, of course.
Okay. Okay, Mayor Newton?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Huban?
Yes.
Ms. Petiri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Jane, can you prepare a letter on that for me? Okay, thanks. Okay, Dylan is Neil Desai?
Yes.
In the holding area?
Yes, he is. I'll bring him in.
Yeah, sure.
Ooh. Glamour shot.
That is.
I can't see myself, but.
Extremely handsome.
Carry it along.
All right, our next item will be Village of Ridgewood Master Plan, Section 1, "Our Village, Our Future: Summary of Public Comments and Discussion Regarding Potential Revisions to the Draft." So I present to you Neil Desai from NV5.
Hello, everybody. Do I have the option of sharing my screen?
We can make that happen. Promote you to a panelist, then you can share. Hold on one second.
Okay. Oh, that's my headshot. Okay. Let me start my video so you can see me proper. Okay, there we go. I was wondering why you were laughing. I was wondering why, what was so funny? It was a glamour shot. Two years ago, more gray hair. Okay, so is everybody able to see my screen right now?
Not yet.
Now you have to share your screen. Go to the share screen button below.
Got it, thanks. Share screen. Okay.
There you go.
Great. Well, thanks. I think I'll talk for about 10 minutes. First, I'll recap that in the 3rd of March and the 4th, and the 4th of March, I presented this document, which is the first section of Ridgewood's next master plan. And I came before you to just kind of walk through the master plan and what it is and what it isn't, at least the section of the master plan. Today, I wanted to present the public comments on the plan and how, kind of summary of the public comments and how that, how, how we might consider revising this document as a result of the public comments. And so one thing I just wanted to reaffirm and remind everybody is that the document that I had, section, first section of the master plan, it's, it is the summary of the entire visioning process, but most important, it is, it includes the statement objectives, principles, and assumptions that is a required element of the master plan. So that big, the 70-page document, section 1.2 of that specifically is the objectives and principles of the master plan. So that's why this is a very important piece of the whole rest of the process that's going to come before, come after it. And a quick note in the timeline, I think it's, it's taken a little bit longer than typical processes, but I think the time is, it was worth well spent because, especially because the Ridgewood hasn't had a master plan for 23 years. And so the first time in that many years, we've really tried to do a broad-based a visioning process with residents and then other stakeholders. And I think, I think when, that's going to be, give us a really strong foundation for when we, when we move forward into the master plan process. So we're about right here in the summer, as everybody knows in the world, that the pandemic is with us and it's uncertain what the future will bring, but I think in some ways, it's, the fact that we're still in the visioning process is a positive thing because the pandemic is going to have, is certainly having short-term impacts, as everybody knows, but that also have long-term impacts. And that's where planning comes in. And I think it'll be, in the slide, just in a few minutes, I'll be talking about some generalities of how communities throughout the country have been responding to the pandemic and how there might be long-term changes that result in that. And I think that's something we'd want to embed into the visioning report, acknowledgement of the pandemic happening during this time and any potential responses that might, you know, might, might become part of the principles as a result of the pandemic changing the way people think about their communities and user communities. I just want to show a more detailed, this is a more detailed schedule of the actual public comments that public commenting period. So shortly after that meeting we had in March, the, the first draft of the, of that draft of the document was posted on the website and promoted on Facebook, Instagram, the village's website. And that first round of public comments was six weeks long. On April 30th, we closed off the period, the comment period, we received 14 comments from, from residents. And then we thought, let's, let's, there's still time. That was right in the beginning of the pandemic, very fraught time, still, you know, very fraught. I mean, we're in a bit of a lull and now, and other states certainly are seeing huge upticks in cases. And so, but, you know, so we decided to extend the comment period another three weeks when things kind of cooled down a bit and, and people felt safer. So for three weeks, we, we, it's starting in June 11th, we posted an alternative method of commenting, just to make it a little easier for people to, who didn't want to go through a 70-page document at the beach, they could look specifically at, we given the option of looking specifically at state, at section 1.12, which is the, that statement objectives and principles chapter in the, in the visioning report, section one, which is the actual part of the master plan, required part of the master plan. And so we had that up for about three weeks and we did receive a few, a few public comments. And so I wanted to kind of debrief on, on kind of the number of comments we received. I think, I mean, I think there's a lot of things which, which come into play in terms of the number, that, you know, the, obviously COVID-19, the health concerns. It was a very odd time, despite people being at home, having to teach their, help their kids with homework and such. It's a, it's a big document. Not everybody is really up for reviewing a big document, especially during the summer. But also I think the content of the document was relatively non-controversial. I think certainly if this, this document represented a specific proposal for something, there might be more contention and things that are brought out through the comment, comment period. But really, that's the, the next, the actual master plan process they'll get into is when the details and the specifics are start to come out in the planning process. And I can tell you, the residents are, given by the ideas they have in mind, I think residents are very, really ready for those details and for making decisions, looking at what people wrote in the visioning questionnaire about their specific ideas for things in downtown. I think the, the, they were, you know, generally, I think the feedback we got, I think we did get some positive comments, as you see on the right side. These are some positive comments that came in about the work we all kind of compiled and put together, which gives us confidence that, okay, we, we, we're on the right track in terms of this document. We've captured the pulse of what's happening in Ridgewood. But I also wanted to say that I think with this, this little diagram on the right, it's fairly typical that when we're, we're doing this type of planning process that, you know, we start with a very broad brush of people participating because it's through, through a survey or visioning questionnaires. And so we had, you know, several thousand people that responded to the questionnaire. We did the focus groups, which, you know, involved about, you know, 100 people. We had the visioning workshops, which involved, again, it went a little bit down to about, you know, about 50 people each session. And then when you get down to the comments on the draft, you know, we had a smaller group. And I would say that's actually quite typical to have a smaller group and a comprehensive plan process to comment. But I think I also wanted to offer you all to comment about, about the number of comments. But I think also, before we do that, I would like to also just share with you at least the takeaways from reviewing all the comments. I guess it's a total of 16 comments received. And I think a few of the things which, which come up, which were either repeated in the comments, or they were things which also themes which came out during the visioning questionnaire. And so, for example, the, the need for environmental resources inventory as a means to inform policy and decision-making was, was one, one, one kind of thing that I saw that came out of this, of the comments that several times, leveraging funds and shared, and shared creative financing and teneting in downtown to reduce burden of village and taxpayers. And this is something that came out also in, in the visioning questionnaire, as well as some of the responses in the survey. People had these detailed ideas about, you know, how, how, how the village could make things work in the future with different ideas in downtown or different ways to come, you know, this comment to the right is, that I have here is one of the comments in the, from the, that we received that says, you know, requesting government corporation foundation funding for some of our initiatives. And certainly, that's exactly what a master plan is for. I think a lot of times, grant funds, grant towers, you know, require a community to have certain requests embedded within their master plan in order for them to qualify for that. So certainly, that's, that's a very important part of implementing the master plan. A comment about making sure that architecture and architectural styles are mentioned in the discussion of character. There's a lot of, in, in the section one report, there's a lot of discussion of character because one of the primary principles that came out of the whole process was keeping a small town village feel. And so I think that was a good, I think that was an important comment because I think there was a lot of discussion of character and form. I think it's also important to recognize and use the words architectural, architectural styles to dig in just a little bit further in that discussion because that's obviously the architectural styles and the detail. Because that's obviously the architectural styles and the details are, are, are something that makes the village what the village is. Linking the tree canopy improvements with climate change benefits. So essentially it's kind of making sure that we're looking at the big picture in terms of the, the potential impacts of investing in certain parts of the village and certainly trees was something that came out as a very highly valued aspect of the village and what makes the village special. The last one, we'll bullet here is for need for more specific vision alternatives or scenarios for downtown. And I can understand that goes along with the point about how there are not, there are not, people had some kind of very specific ideas in mind when they provided comments in the visioning questionnaire and other parts of the, of the master plan and the things that really kind of went beyond the visioning process, which I think is sort of a contradiction because the visioning process, you're kind of envisioning things. So I can understand where people are coming from, you know. So the comment is to kind of, you know, I want to have a kind of, what are the scenarios that we're proposing to people for, for the future of downtown? You know, downtown as an arts destination, downtown as, as this. And I think I, I understand where they're coming from. But I think that's really what, what's going to happen in the next, when we get into the details of the master plan is when we're going to start really getting into those decisions and proposals about different kind of choices that you make about the future. So I just want to kind of recognize that because I think there are a lot of people already to start thinking about into the details beyond just the principles and objectives. There was a, during, in, in the comment forums, we, we did want to give people the, the chance to talk about the pandemic. And so the question here is, does the pandemic and its potential impacts change your thinking about any of the core values, objectives and principles identified in this draft? And this is what I just mentioned about how I think this is an interesting opportune moment that we're still in the visioning process where we can see how, how people might view things differently, residents in the village. And just some of the quotes we have were, one of them was, the first one here is during the pandemic, where people walked the neighborhoods to help relax. That's certainly something many people have been doing to stay sane and have open air. There's another quote here about, I mean, this is, this is a very important thing, of course, is helping the local businesses. And we're seeing across the board, you know, even in Ridgewood, where outdoor dining and kind of remaking streets for commerce has been a temporary way to help businesses you know, come back and, and do business and help people also accommodate people to enjoy their lives now that things are in a different phase. I think this other quote here, these are the three quotes that specifically came out of this, out of our feedback that talked about the pandemic. I think this quote talks about the greater priority to resiliency planning, which is not just climate change, but it's, it's also health. And as we talk about the future of Ridgewood. And so I covered the kind of the number of comments, the, the general kind of takeaways from the comments. Some touched upon the pandemic. And so this is the COVID-19 factory, the trends and potential impacts. And these are kind of general things that, you know, you, you've probably all observed. I've been trying to stay abreast of what other towns are doing, other cities are doing. And I think some of the things that have, have, have really changed or, or been strengthened is, for example, greater appreciation of existing open spaces and the desire for more open space. I just talked about using streets as open spaces, spaces for commercial activity. In larger cities, you're seeing streets being closed for people to, people to walk safely around town. Increased desire for safe walking and bicycling. The potential for increased, I think one of the interesting things that, that'll could have an impact on places like Ridgewood and, and other towns is and it's yet to be seen, but from what we're, what, you know, the realtors are reporting, there's a, there's, there could be an increased outflow of families from New York City. Families who are just fed up with living the city life, paying a lot of money and want fresh air. And there could be an outflow of more families from suburb, from New York City and other large cities to suburban and rural communities. And I think another one, and there's many more that you might have also, but another one which is interesting for, to Ridgewood specifically, because I think in the statistics in the, in the section one report I had, there's, there's a stat that Ridgewood has one of the highest, already had one of the highest percentages of people working from home. Now that more people are working from home and people are generally loving working from home, that could, that could, and corporations, you know, are, are, you know, we've, we've kind of proven that working from home can work effectively. But I think the important, the importance of this to planning in the future and visioning is more people choosing to work from home. That could equal potential for fewer daily commuters to New York City. One person mentioned in, in the, in the visioning questionnaire about how, you know, that could lead to more people walking around using businesses during the daytime. There's a lot of implications this might have. If, if, and again, it's still yet to be seen what exactly happens, but that's, that's a kind of a potential thing that you might see in, in the future with with, with this experiment we've been living and working and meeting from home. So really the, the, now as far as, so all these things that I read about, we read about the, in the, in the in the comments that people gave us back on the, on the draft, preliminary draft. These are a list of the substantive revisions. I think there, we offered people, we, we wanted people to provide comments on any kind of factual errors and things, and we have those as well. So we'll make those, those, I guess I'll call them minor corrections to the pros and, 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 and the sections where they apply. But I want to talk right now about the more substantive substantive revisions that we might make to the draft, preliminary draft of this document as a result. And one of them will be in section 1.6, which is covers the different trends, the environmental trends is to include discussion of the COVID-19 pandemic and potential impacts and adaptations. But more so not necessarily like the short-term, because we know what the short-term impact, uh, short-term adaptations have been, but you know, some of them may become long-term. And then what are some other long-term implications, such as things of, of if there's more families looking to move into places like Ridgewood away from the city? Another, another kind of substantive change is that in, I really felt that right now, section 1.2, which is the which is the objectives and principles, which is the actual required piece of the, of the master plan is currently the very last section. And I would like to, and this is actually not necessarily a comment that's come directly out of the comments we received, but I think, I think, I think it might be a good idea to put this section right up front after the introduction. So it's the first thing people read. Because that's, this is really the core of the, this is really the outcome of the visioning process. And if, if we, and I think people should read it upfront. And if they would like to continue on reading about the visioning process and how they came about that, they can do so. In terms of, this is the kind of last two potential substantive revisions based in the comments is in the actual section 1.2, we have, you know, we have these statement of objectives and principles. And so there's several of them. I'm just going to go back to the presentation here. I think there's opportunity to strengthen the discussion of this principle here, it's strive to be a proactive in community planning matters. And I think that, I think that, I think what's, I think I would suggest that right now, it's, it is a bit vague in the, in the current draft of the plan. It says strive to be proactive in community planning matters. The vision process represents a proactive approach to community planning. Proactive engagement of residents and stakeholders should continue. But I think it's also important to get into more details. I think maybe making a connection in terms of proactiveness to be more proactive in terms of resiliency and adaptation in terms of health and climate change. More proactive in terms of getting the information that's needed to make decisions such as using an environmental resources inventory. And then there's another potential principle. We'll flip back to the document here. It's, it's under the general village-wide principles and, and and there's a principle number five that currently talks about striving for better fiscal management responsibility and accountability while continuing to support the village's strong public institutions. And I think the, the, the comment about creative funding strategies and partnerships. I think this court, this sort of, this area of thinking tends to be in a lot of people's minds. And the village may already be doing some of this. But I think, I think it's worth adding a sixth principle underneath that, that complements that and gets into a little bit more detail about leveraging partnerships, grant funding through the master plan, creative funding strategies for implementing future, future projects. And so those are the, those are kind of the one, two, three, I says of the four substantive revisions that, that kind of come out of the analysis of the comments that came to us. And I think I do have a, a next step slide, but I think I want to stop there potentially for, for questions and and comments about any of what I've just talked about from, from the board.
And does anyone have questions for Neil? You can jump right in.
Okay, so I guess I'll start. So Neil, just going back to some of the public comments and how you're sensing that this shapes the document is, is part of this though, I mean, I'm just asking as I'm looking at some of these modifications and suggestions, does some of this potentially circumvent the original input in any way? Do you feel that, that people who participated in the visioning process that when you have a substantive revision based on public comment, is that kind of undermining what the, the overall project in a way? Or am I missing something?
I, I, I understand what you, I, I understand what you, I think you're getting a kind of, you know, it's, the comments that we have are, are as, in a sense, they're related to the people who are really either have a certain interest in, in the community, certain aspect of it. I think if you look at the comments, you know, they're, you know, it's public, it's public information, but you know, there's, I think there's somebody from the green committee or the tree committee that gave comments. There's a trendy Ridgewood, which provided some, some comments. From that perspective, that, that is something to be careful about, that you know, that one person's or one kind of group's interests don't kind of circumvent the process. Which is why I think when I look, when I look at the specific changes that, at least the ones that I have in the slide, they are, they're more kind of supportive. They're, they're not changing the nature of any of the principles. And, and maybe that's up to argument from, from you, but they don't change the nature of it, but they kind of add, add a little bit more detail or a little more teeth to them. So in terms of the, the, these, these potential revisions, this family revisions here on this page that I'm proposing. You know, I, I, I had that in the back of my mind that, you know, we can't, we can't necessarily change the nature of anything that's come out of the process for that reason, because this is from 16 people who responded. But if there's things which could improve what we already have, I felt that it was worth proposing. And so these are the, kind of the main ones that, that, that came out of that. And out of my kind of analysis of, of the comments, but so that's, that's kind of the way I structured these, these revisions so that they're not things which are necessarily kind of going back and subverting comments that have already been.
Three of 16 comments is sort of regarding the pandemic or COVID or, or future pandemics or something like that, or, or adaptations to prepare, how people would prepare for that and what communities can do. So three of 16 comments about that seems, I mean, that's actually sort of a decently high percentage of comments having to do with that subject. So, you know, adding something like that. It's funny that we started out with a lot of it, and I hear what Susan's saying, a lot of it was driven by, it seemed like one group when we were talking about the aging in place stuff. And we had the people come and present and it was driven by so much of that. And in the end, it, there's really none of, we don't need to make that anymore of a substantiative part of the document. It's covered and we have it. But other things maybe appear to be a little bit more important or needing some tweaking. I don't know. I thought three comments out of 16 regarding one thing, of course, it's happening now. The pandemic and all of this, but we don't know what's next. So it's worth at least adding in some of that stuff. I, I think, I don't know. I, I agree about not wanting it driven by any one area.
Right. I think, I think with, with respect to the pandemic comments, I, I think apart from the three comments we received, which was just kind of nice to see, you know, people, what some people were, were thinking about. I think the, I think the pandemic in general, and I did this for another, an actual master plan for another community. I think it, I think it's regardless of, of, you know, what comments were. I think it merits, it merits being acknowledged in the visioning process since it happened during the visioning process. And my suggestion would be keep the discussion of it under the trends, section 1.6. So that it's, it's there, it's, it's acknowledged that this huge, you know, worldwide event has happened. And there are potential long-term impacts and adaptations. So I kind of tried to keep it in there, although I think, you know, I think where it starts, I think where it starts getting into the territory of, you know, is this one kind of comment about resilience and adaptation.
How about climate change and all that?
So I think it's starting, I think, I think where I see where, you know, your and Susan's point about resiliency adaptation, I think when it gets into this section here, we're talking about considering strengthening of the discussion of strive to be a proactive community planning matters. I, I do see, I do see that, I think that would be, I think, I would, I would agree that there's, that we need to look at that one much more closely. This, this recommendation and, and even the specifics of environmental resources inventory. I think, I think we should, we're gonna, we're gonna meet and talk about this next week, but I think we should look at this carefully because I think, I think importance of data and information goes, I think goes without saying. Without necessarily the need, need to be very specific about what form that takes. Is it data can, can be an environmental resource inventory, data can come in in many other different ways. So I think in the light of this, you know, what you just brought up, I think we should look more closely at, at at this potential revision and I think we should look more closely at that one.
Do we have other questions for Neil?
I have a question. Neil, do you have specifics on the number of people that work from home? I know you, obviously we all know it's increased, but you said that Ridgewood was higher to begin with.
Yeah, let me see if I can go to that screen here. Who was that that asked me that question? I'm sorry. Who asked me that question?
Allison.
Allison, I'm sorry, I didn't make. So I think there's a piece of the data we have here.
Oh, I see. Go back one. It's right there. Work from home, 10%.
Yes, 10%. And that's the highest in Bergen County. That's an interesting statistic. I think people generally corroborated that in, in terms of just what they've observed. And the data bears it out. And so I'm sorry, what was, what was, did you have a specific question?
Yeah, so obviously it's, we know that the fluctuation is much greater now than it will be in the future, but I'm sure that the percentage of work from home will increase in general, just given everyone's newfound capabilities. But I just, for me, that's, I feel like we need to not focus on that, but I feel like that's a very relevant piece when we're looking at the two that you were just talking about in terms of, you know, earmarking COVID as a trend in section.
1.6. 1.6, yeah.
I don't know. I just, I just think that's important, especially when, you know, people are finding themselves, given the limited comments, but finding themselves more concerned with green space and, you know, having a voice in the health and of our community and climate change. I just, I just think that's, that's worth paying attention to in terms of how we address open space and going forward.
I think one thing that you just reminded me that I, that I forgot to mention, when it comes to, you know, when it comes to the slide that I just talked about, this slide here, a greater appreciation of existing open spaces. this slide here, a greater appreciation of existing open spaces. I, I found it interesting that the principles that we already have that already came out of this process already reflect kind of these things that, you know, people, you know, I think when we look down the principles into the actual report, there's a whole section on transportation, walking and biking, pedestrian connections, parks, maintaining natural undeveloped spaces. And so, so it's, it's, I thought it was interesting that there's not necessarily need to change the principles because the principles already kind of reflect appreciation of open space among residents and desire for more pedestrian safety and bicycling. So, so in some ways the, the COVID is just kind of amplifying those. But you already have that as part of the process. I mean, it's one, one important thing I neglected to, to say about these, about these, these trends and impacts that many of them are already embedded in, in the principles that we have in section 1.2.
Agreed. Thank you.
Neil, I was also thinking about, I mean, it's hard to think beyond where we are right now with COVID, but this makes you think of if something else comes up in the future, it might not be, you need to be six feet away from someone that might be on surfaces and everything. Maybe just in that part, putting in a comment about how in the future we'll probably need to be more flexible about things like how the town really quickly switched Ridgewood Avenue into a pedestrian mall to accommodate restaurants outside in this. And just something about that in the future that things may need to be a little bit more flexible, depending on what comes at us really.
Yeah, without a doubt. I think, I mean, I, I look, I, I was impressed with pictures that people sent me from Ridgewood downtown over the weekend, but, and that was, I'm sure it took a lot of work to get done, but right, I think flexibility, I think that's what everybody, every town right now is, is learning to, to do, whether it's just through people. It's amazing how folks, everybody's adapted very well through Zoom meetings, you know, planning boards. People start off like, you know, just blindly in a lot of ways, but it's become normal now. It's become the way we do things. In terms of, I think that's an important thing to mention when we, when we, when we talk about, when we add a COVID as a trend in this section here on, I think in 1.6 and the transsection will certainly include their flexibility. I think the, I think, I, I wonder whether, whether that's, I don't think that needs to be mentioned necessarily as a principle, but I don't know. I think.
I think in the trends, it would definitely be I think it would be useful in the trend section.
Yeah. I think it's certainly because that's kind of because of the fact we don't know. I think it's like, again, this, this including the transaction is a recognition that it's happening and you know, there's, and I think it's worth mentioning also that a lot of these, these things that are happening are in line with the vision the kind of the principles we already have came up with, but also to be, you know, towns to be more flexible. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we can really come up with concrete recommendations.
Right.
So.
Because who knows what's gonna happen?
So I think, I think 1.6 is the best place to put it. I, unless I think, I think putting it as a, as a principle, I think, I think it could be weaved in the, the notion of, of flexibility being flexible, but I think it's, I think, I think by necessity, Ridgewood and other places have learned to be very flexible. Yeah. And, but I think I wonder, I wonder, you know, you know, how, you know, people might start seeing things differently, witnessing this flexibility they have and they might start to.
Yeah, exactly.
Some one, whatever, you know, you've done 20 different things to be flexible. And a couple of them might be like, oh, these might be really good things to do all the time anyways. And so we don't know what that is yet, but I think that's going to be really important to look at. To see what's going to be, what, what, what things are, could work in the long term. So planning for the short term by being flexible, but also thinking about how certain things you've done to adapt could be long-term. And that's not something we're going to answer, answer in this document, what, what those things are going to be. But it's something we can include in, as a mention in the report that, you know, as a recommendation sort of in this 1.6 trend, trend section.
Yeah. So I actually, I kind of agree on, on both Allison and Diane's and it's great perspective. One that I hadn't really given much thought to. And perhaps serendipitous that it took us so long to get to this point because we might be the, the first municipality with a pandemic-proof master plan document, which is kind of interesting. But I actually think that it's, it would be wise to add into trends as a, you know, the desire for flexibility in, in spaces. And I think that that's smart. And I also think it's interesting from Allison's perspective that the more folks, people that are working from home, the more desired is, and we come back, I guess, to earlier in the meeting, the open space component. And, you know, even, even just being flexible in parking and, and how we work our, our, our land and just traffic flow, all of it is impacted by this. So I think it's, it's wise to add those, that into there.
I wonder if we did this now, would anybody's priorities be listed differently above? Hang on, my kids are yelling. So would any of, anybody be list, have differently lit? I think they would because, you know, it seemed important to have soccer fields or something. They're, they're still important, but now you know, certain things like bike paths and parking that we have fought over for so long. I just think people's perspectives are a little different now. A, a little and I, and nobody knows when we'll go back to normal or I think it drives a lot of it. So I, I love the flexible, the flexibility being the key word being, or adaptation, I guess, being used.
I like flexible. I think adaptation is a little too jargonier, too, too overused. It's too fancy.
All right. Sorry, Neil.
That's, that's just my, I, I, I didn't mean that. I like keeping it very simple. Flexible is a great word. I like the word flexible.
Makes perfect sense.
I think that Melanie, what you reminded me of, you know, we asked in the vision questionnaire for people to rank the, their topics, all the different topics, open spaces down to community health in the vision questionnaire from, and we came out with the results and the top ones are transportation and, and depending what it was. And I think, I think you would see certainly some shifts, some shift between categories, but I think, but what I am pleased to see is that, that, you know, as I just mentioned in response to Allison's comment, the, you know, that I think a lot of these trends of what people are kind of appreciating are, you know, are, are already embodied in, in that section 1.2, the principles. That I think it's, it's a matter of, I think people, people maybe just, people kind of appreciate it more or now in the future are really, really, really realize, okay, you know, this is really important.
Parks I don't see used often, you know, they're just sort of spaces near, near me by Maple Park or whatever, and they're flooded now. It's not flooded, but they're busy. People are using them.
Yeah.
It's nice to see certain things like that. So I just, I want, you know, certain little things. I, I like this, these adaptations or whatever has changed.
I won't talk and I won't go over the slide. Just want to make sure there's any, no any other, any other discussion you wanted to have about this or any other questions?
Any more questions or comments for Neil? Okay. All right. We can review the timeline, I guess.
Yeah. So, so the next steps is produce a final draft of section one, and I'm going to give it to the master plan subcommittee. Going to have it kind of red, sort of speak red line or highlighted so they can see very clearly what, what has been added to the document or revised. And we'll probably meet shortly thereafter to discuss that. I think we might work on, talk, we'll probably discuss more some of the potential changes here, the principles. We'll kind of fine tune those and, and decide whether, you know, I think whether, whether it makes sense to, you know, how we could strengthen this, this little bit more and how we want to word this. Whether we want to, or whether we think we should keep the same. I think we'll kind of get into a little more detail on that on these two principles here that potentially could kind of add to or supplement. And then we will present, the, the subcommittee will present the final draft to the planning board. We post it online for the public. And I think we'll, I'll have some commentary on, on the comments people made and so that it's not just, here's our next draft, but you know, here's, I want to provide some context on the comments and the process so that people know we gave them due consideration. We read all the comments and we can continue through the to the planning board and certainly not in August, but in September, potentially the first planning board meeting in September. We tentatively approve the, the final draft and authorize the date for the public hearing and the second meeting in September, we could have a planning board meeting, but again, you know, we'll, this is a flexible timeline, but this is what we're, this is where we're headed for the September completion date. And I want to go back, I think because one of the purposes of this document, some of the sections are really more for, not really meant for residents to, to use, but really meant for the planning board council to kind of look at. They're kind of more instructive. How do you go about initiating the master plan process? What sections do you want to prioritize first? That sort of thing. I think that discussion could start if, if, you know, assuming a September completion date. We could potentially start having a discussion by the end of the year and early next year for how we want to kind of go about implementing or creating the, the next sections of the master plan. So.
Any questions on the timeline from anybody? Okay. Thanks, Neil.
All right.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item will be discussion regarding an ordinance to men, chapter 190, the code of the village of Ridgewood at section 190-37B to allow accessible ramps on one and two family dwellings to be reviewed by the site plan exemption committee. Peter, did you want to handle this, presenting this or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So I've spoken with Mary Ann about this and essentially she did some updates to, you know, address the language in the existing ordinance, which essentially, you know, it, it causes a situation where accessible ramps and lifts would be required to get site planned. That language has been removed in two different sections, 190-37B2. And then the next section, I think it's section C1A. And in place of that, in section 190-37B2, a new item E is proposed to be included. And that, you know, basically not only is the language that would require accessible ramps and lifts to get site plan review and approval been removed, but certain standards have been introduced, which would hopefully provide a, a range of flexibility to enable the, you know, the single family or two-family property owner to be able to install a ramp without site plan approval, without the delay and without the additional cost. And, you know, some of those standards, just real quickly, you know, essentially if there's a homeowner association, we'd want approval. But other than that, you know, the structure should meet ADA and barrier free requirements. If it doesn't comply with the underlying zoning, it should be no larger than is practically needed to provide accessibility. So range of flexibility with that standard, I, I kind of view it as a standard of reasonableness, kind of like you'd see with a waiver. You know, in, in terms of, of the way it could be looked at. In addition to that, you know, if the structure extends into any required setback, it should extend no more than is practically needed to provide accessibility. As structure should not be subject to any coverage stormwater or FAR requirements. And one of the things that ties in with that is it could, although it's not temporary in the sense of, you know, months, but in the terms of years and ownership, there's actually provision that if the, the individual with, with a disability were to, if their household were to move out, that structure, if it's not completely conforming with the setback and, and other requirements, it should be removed from the residence within six months. There's some limitations on that side as, as well, so that if the reason that it was installed in the first place, you know, wouldn't necessarily run with, with the land like a used variance does. And I mean, those, those are the highlights. So like the intent was, and I, I think it's covered all the, all the key items just to provide a, a range of flexibility and a reduced burden for the homeowner.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Peter?
Why, why the six months? To remove if somebody no longer resides? Why, why six months?
Um, I mean, it could be a different timeframe that it's something I've seen in certain other ordinances like, and this is completely different, but like cell towers, solar arrays, some have a decommissioning timeframe. Generally it could be three to six months. You know, if there's a, a transaction involved as far as ownership, I don't see why it would have to be six months. I mean, it could, it could be a reduced timeframe if that's, if you think that's preferable. Any, any other thoughts on the, on the timeframe?
I don't have any thoughts on the timeframe, but also I had a question about that provision in that who is responsible for the removal? Should it be the handicapped family that was utilizing it? Should they have to remove it before they move or the estate, if it might be the estate? Or is that something that the parties contract on their own, you know, through a contract of sale?
That's, that's a great question. Um, I mean, we could, we could put language in there that would clarify that. I would.
I mean, I just thought, maybe our, our board attorney has some thoughts on that as well. I don't know.
I was just going to say, I'd probably want to have a legal review of the language just to make sure it complies with real estate law. But Chris, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I would try to stay away from transfer of property issues and putting up and taking down. It sort of governs the construction of the ramp. What the parties want to do, if it's up properly and a new party wants to take it down, that's their business. I'd like to stay, I'd like to have the town outside of that.
Yeah, I agree with that. You would, you don't want to get involved with that. As for the six months, some of these ramps could be pretty big. I mean, there's the small ramp and then there's the massive ramp. And I guess there's flexibility. I don't know. What, what were you thinking, Susan? Like 30, 60 days or?
No, I didn't really actually have a thought. I just thought six months seemed like a long time to me, like six months after in, in, you know, whether it is a, a transfer realty, it, it, it wouldn't necessarily seem like a long time if, you know, someone passed away and it was an estate issue, but still six months, it, it seems a little bit lengthy. I don't, I mean, it's probably six of one, but if anyone else has a thought, I mean, it just seems like a long time to do.
That seemed off, but just, I mean, what do you make it? Three months? What's the real, like you said, six, one? What's the difference?
Well, Melanie, it's a good point and you can make it 30, 90 days with the ability to extend for cause another 90 days. And your point about an estate is a good one. And it happens unfortunately more often than not, but somewhat often.
Yeah, I know. I, I know it happens often. That's why I'm asking. So, I mean, I, I, why don't we make it four months? And, you know, this way, you know, if somebody has a reason to need to extend it, but it just seems like a long, especially on, just a, on a straightforward transaction, it seems like a long time.
Makes sense.
Also, would, I mean, would it be put into the contract of the sale? Like would the, would the new owners know that they have to take it down? That this was only allowed because there was a handicap person living there? And now when the new owners come in, if there is no handicap, it has to come down.
Well, Lorraine, that's a, that's a good point, but when new owners move to a community, they have to know that they can't park on the streets overnight based upon the ordinances. I don't, I wouldn't want the town involved in the minutia of a transfer or a transactional contract. They need to be on, if there's proper notice by publication of the ordinances, which there always is in Ridgewood, then they have to go bye-bye.
So let me, let, let me just kind of expanding or on a councilwoman. So let me, let, let me just kind of expanding or, on a, Councilwoman Reynolds' comments. So on a, on a site plan exemption, because this would be an exemption item, right? So there's no resolution that could be attached as a deed restriction than to force removal after a certain time. I mean, because typically we, we see deed restrictions on an approval, a resolution of approval on, you know, certain aspects of whether Board of Adjustment, Planning Board. So is that something that legally we have the right to do is have some document attached that indicates so that, I, I think it's a good point because even though, yeah, I, I mean, a homeowner can walk out the front door and see that there's no parking on my street, September through June, 8:30 to 9:30 and 2:30 to 3:30. That's kind of like a no brainer and they get certain information. But, I mean, logically, would somebody necessarily think that that's restrict, that that has to be removed? I don't know how someone would know that. I honestly, I don't. So other than a deed restriction.
Well, I think the spirit of what the amendment is, and, and I think Francis brought it up last meeting, is to, and Melanie, I think too, you, you want to allow these individuals to have an exemption so they can get in for a situation where they don't really want a ramp in their house, but they need one.
Right.
So most of the, it's irrelevant what the board thinks of an individual in this instance, I think. Because one would think most of the people would want it down when, if they don't need that type of ramp when they move to that property. If we start getting involved in exemptions that require approvals and a, and a deed notification, I just, that, I think that takes away from the spirit of what the board wants to do, which is to allow individuals in tough times and urgency to be exempt to get a ramp. And, you know, they have attorneys on these closings. I mean, Rich and Francis and you do a lot of real estate transaction work more than me. But bottom line is, these are no, these are ordinances that are properly allowed for public notice. And I think they have to abide by them, just like you can't just build the deck off the back of your house. You can't just raise your roof. There's a lot of issues that may or may not be involved that these homeowners should be, should be cognizant of.
I, I think I would not be in favor of a deed restriction. And I, I think that, you know, if you move into a new town and you know that you need to build something like a ramp, most people are going to call up the town and say, do I need any kind of permit or, you know? Just like they would if they were building a deck.
No, I'm not, I wasn't trying to make anything more difficult for someone in a time of need. What I was trying to convey is to, to Councilwoman Reynolds' point. And I, I, I hear this because obviously if somebody does need the ramp in all likelihood, and fortunately, they would need the ramp in all likelihood, they would remove it, but I, I just, I'm confused as to how someone would know. And, and logically, again, sure, they might remove it, but I, I just don't understand how someone knows that. I, I think I'm missing something and I think it was a great question because I, I'm, personally, I'm missing it. I don't know about anyone else. I'm not a lawyer.
When you're purchasing a house.
Concerned, I, I have an idea that could fly. If it's presented in the ordinance that a warning or a notification would go out prior to a citation for a violation, allowing a time to cure.
That's great. Like it would, it would, there would be a protective measure basically, so when the code enforcement officer would write them a, a warning note letter first. And she's flexible anyway, most of the time, even if they summon, she would give somebody a matter, a certain number of days to take it down.
Right, but if we put that right in the ordinance, that might solve all the issues.
Right, then that's, that's easiest, whatever, that, that makes the more, the most sense.
You want to make a timeframe like for the portable ramps versus the permanent ramps? Like a difference or do you just want to call it like three, four months and go from there? You done?
Yeah, I think it's too much to break these things down like that. I mean, the idea is accessibility. If they have to take it down within four months, regardless of what type of ramp it is, it's going to be taken down within that time period.
Yeah, I think it keeps it a little bit simpler. I, I, I agree. It just keeps it easy.
And what a time to cure if they don't do it in four months, another 30 days?
60 days, then we'll get back to six months.
That, you know what? That's what I, I was thinking that too. That's.
Yeah, you get back to six months, which works. It's actually, then it kind of works all, it all works out. And you don't get to six months and then get to eight months, but now at least you get four months to six months.
That works.
Just for logistics, when someone's buying a house, usually they would mention, hey, there's a handicap ramp there. And I would tell them to check with the town on the zoning and things like that. That would be most common. And usually I tell them that anyway, if there was like a new deck or new construction at the house, you know, people usually check with the building department to make sure that all permits were issued and things like that. So at least they would get on notice that way if you were thinking someone would be unwitting. And if, you know, the purchase, person purchases it and it's not discussed with the other party, then it's on the person that bought the property. I mean, it's firebeware really.
Yeah, and look, we're, we're on the tail end of that discussion. I think the most important thing is that we're simplifying a process for people in their time of need. And that's what the benefit is here. So that's really what our goal was and, and so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think it achieves it definitely.
So Susan, in that vein, can I just ask a general question on here? One of the bullet points, the handicap customer structure is in the least obtrusive location that is practical. I mean, isn't that sort of common sense? Someone's going to put it in the most practical sense that they can get in and out of their home? I'm not understanding why that bullet point is there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that, um, it's, it's certainly subjective. And, you know, I, I guess it's, it's more of a, you know, let's say qualitative, uh, general guideline, doesn't necessarily have to be in there. You know, if, if, if it's in a really unusual location, I think chances are it, it may violate a setback or there'd be another, another concern about it. So.
But I think you already have that covered in one of your other bullet points about setbacks. So I feel like that's concern. I just, I don't know why, if, you know, somebody suddenly needs a wheelchair or they're moving to a home and they need to be able to get in or out, it just kind of seems like a, I don't know, a not nice bullet to have in there. That's the way I read it.
Well, I thought it was important because at first I was, I didn't know what to make of it. But then you don't want the ramp going right in the front if there, it could be done practically on the side. You know, someone might build the easiest, cheapest way and it might go right up the front and they don't care how it looks type thing. They just want easy access where the town, you know, you're reviewing the, the thing and maybe something can be built that achieves the purpose. It's practical, it doesn't cost a lot more and it's on the side. Maybe it's not the, the best arrangement for them for ease, but you know, it kind of balances it. It gives them access, yet it has it where, you know, because in some places, some people have these extremely long ramps going and it can detract from the front. So I think you need that flexibility.
I don't, I, I, I don't know, Richard, I, I disagree. I think if, if someone can get into their home and it's the easiest way for them to get in and they're older and they can't push themselves or whatever it is, and it's easier to get in their front door, I've seen them. I, I think they should be able to go on to their front door and not have to enter on the side.
Well, that, they're both good, they're, they're all good points. Maybe, I hate to give Chris more work, but maybe just add the words to the satisfaction of the village engineer.
Can I just jump in? Because I'm actually glad Debbie brought it up because when I read that, I was almost felt it was insensitive.
Yeah.
Was the right word. I felt, I, I felt like, well, you know, if, if a family member needs a wheelchair, how can, how can anything related to that be obtrusive? I, I mean, I, I just, I felt it was very, like an insensitive comment. I hear what everybody's saying, but I, I, it just sounds insensitive. It sounds like kind of mean to me. I, I agree.
I can't imagine living here for 50 years and, you know, whatnot and someday, you know, i-if I'm in that situation, that someone's going to tell me I have to enter through my side door. Like I just, I, I don't know. I just think it's insensitive.
I agree with Debbie. I, I, I don't think that we should have to dictate if somebody has a driveway and a circular driveway in front of their home and we're going to tell them they have to build a ramp on the, the side with the garage or something. I, I don't know. I, I don't know if I.
And like, I think people are going to put it in the most practical location to get in and out of your home. And if anyone knows anyone that has, you know, individuals in wheelchairs, that's what they do. Like if they look for the most practical sense so they can get in and out of their home.
Well, if it's, if it satisfies the permit, maybe strike that language because, I mean, Chris, maybe jump in. But if the permit needs to be satisfied, then that should be it. That should be the, if it's constructed in a sound way, not violative of any other ordinance provisions, maybe that should be sufficient.
I think also, I think the, the code has plenty of situations where if a ramp is found to not be utilized by the intended party, I believe we have ample mechanisms to convince the property owner that it should be removed to address the mayor's concern. And, you know, whether the timeframe be three months, four months or six months, that's for the board to decide in the ordinance, but we can make it work.
Well, we, I thought we were off that topic.
Back with this language in order to make it as absolutely easy as possible with, with so little in, but with, for people to, in this situation, to put up a ramp. And that's, yeah, I think if we just take that one bit out.
Line out, yeah.
I don't know what somebody, you know, somebody's living room carpet, they don't want to have to wheel over it or in their kitchen is a veteran. We don't know. It's the idea is to make it easy for families who need this.
Yeah.
People feel comfortable. Yeah, I, I mean, I, yeah, just take that line out.
Well, yeah, we'll remove it.
Saying that Debbie.
I, I appreciate all, all the comments on that. We'll, we'll remove it. And I, I think there's, there's many other more quantitative or more, more concrete, you know, mechanisms and language in here that we could use to, you know, to reach a, a positive beneficial result. So I, I'll, we'll remove it and I think it'll still be a, a sound, a sound ordinance and a sound approach.
So I guess we'll wait to get a revised one, Chris.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, okay. Or any other comments on it? Anyone? Okay, alright, thanks Peter.
Thank you.
Our, our next item will be approval of minutes from June 16, 2020. I believe whoever was present is able to vote on it. Please review the minutes and does anyone have any comments on them? Okay, do we have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, that was Melanie. Call the roll.
Mary Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Subin?
Yes.
Ms. Piteri?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Westner? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Chris, we don't need an executive session, do we?
We do not.
Okay. Does anyone have any further business for the planning board at all? All right. All right. Do we have a motion to end the meeting?
Nobody wants to go home.
They're having too much fun.
Are home, we've been home. That's why everybody wants.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Diane made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, we're concluded. Thank you very much, everybody.
Night everyone. Night Neil.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Okay, take care now.